We're going to get started in just a couple of minutes. The one thing, wherever you're seated, if you could get, sit where you can see the screen, okay, because the presentation will be on this screen. So if you can't see the screen, maybe shift around a bit. There you go. Good. Okay, we're going to get started here with the meeting. We'll try to keep this, I'll try to keep this moving along, respect your time. And if you could, hold your questions, and then I will open it up to questions at the end. But I would like to try to move through this, and then totally happy to answer any questions you might have. Let's begin with a prayer in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. God, we give you thanks for this fall day, give you thanks for our parish, and the 100 years you've given us. We ask that you bless our efforts as we embrace some challenges that face us, confident with the guidance of the Holy Spirit, we will begin our second 100 years together. And we ask us all, through Christ our Lord, amen. Amen, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. As you know, I've only been here four or five months. You guys have been here a lot longer than me, and so it's taken me about four or five months to get my head around kind of stuff, if you will. And it did, it became apparent with our finance council, which I've had some great help doing that. Barb Stager is here, she was bookkeeper, subbed pinch hit for us for many months. And then Brandon Rykoff, is Brandon here? John Bibbush is here. Other members of our finance council have helped me kind of get my head around it, along with Jeremy, our business manager. But it became apparent to me that we do have, oh, a handful of things on our plate right now, that I see as requiring like immediate, immediate attention, that can't really be put off. And so it was, oh, about a month ago or so, myself, our chair of our finance council, Brandon Rykoff, Jeremy, I'm gonna call our business manager, went and sat down with Bishop Thomas, and our diocesan council attorney, Tony Antoni, Tom Antonini, along with our CFO, who, and our new CFO, Chief Financial Officer for the Diocese, and also our Controller for the Diocese. And we laid out kind of a big picture, a pretty detailed big picture, of everything going on. But we specifically honed in on a few things, that we said, you know, these other things maybe we can table, we're going to need to get to those eventually, but here's some things we'd like to address and talk to you about now. And these are what I call the pressing issues facing our parish. Number one, the old school, it was formerly the church, the old gymnasium, and the connecting buildings. To, they are unsafe. We have floors falling down inside, we, they're unsafe. They're unsafe to go in, we've changed the locks, because over the years, a lot of people, probably have had, 100 years, you know, so a lot of lock changes, and so we changed that for safety purposes. And then also, we put a fence out around at the Diocese's direction, to add just another layer of security, to keep someone, you know, from getting in and getting hurt, because that's, we're concerned about that. But demolishing that, or taking that down, the estimated cost we have to do that right now is $415,000. Now, part of that, a good chunk of it, is abatement, asbestos removal, because there's quite a bit in those buildings. And then actually to take it down and haul it away and turn it into green space, that's another $205,000. Now, one of the complications in that is, we're sitting in a nice toasty warm church, but the boilers that heat this church are in the basement of that building. And so, as we take that building down, we're going to lose heat in this building. Now, the one thing about that is, is those boilers are really on their last leg anyway. In fact, we have one working now, and when we turned it on, we're sort of afraid to turn it off, because we're not sure it'll turn back on, okay? At least without some ca, big costs. And we're trying not to throw good money after bad right now at those. So we're doing our best with that, that's why we've had a few days in church on Sunday, it's been a little toasty, had to open windows with the heat on, that's why. So, the old, replacing those boilers with high efficiency boilers down here, in a storage room in the basement adjacent to the brides room, that those boilers can go into. We've had the Bureau Group out of Ma'Ami, an engineering and architecture firm, make that design for us, that was already kind of in the works, but they finished it up, and they're out right now with bids on that. Jeremy, we had how many contractors look at that?
Five.
Five. So we're waiting on those to come back in, but we're estimating, we think there's a pretty conservative estimate on that, $200,000. But that'll connect to the existing radiators and things that are here in the church. And then lastly, tuck pointing the church. Tuck pointing the church is the mortar between the bricks, over years, it tends to erode and come out. If you look on the back of the church, you can probably see that the best, as you look up top, and you'll see mortar that deep that's out between bricks. The problem about that is, is that when that mortar starts to come out, and we get freeze, thaw, rain, et cetera, that can wick into the church, and then you start to have plaster problems inside. So, we don't want that to happen. The good news is, the brick we have in this church is awesome. It's very hard brick. So we don't have, we're not facing replacing brick, as like, one of my former parishes, we had to cut out 1,100 bricks and replace it, because that's that red kind of clay brick. Whoever built this church, nice brick, okay? So, I get my kicks off little things, nice bricks. Anyway, so tuck pointing, we estimate that cost to be $45,000. In the years 2019 and 2020, our parish did not pay our assessments to the Diocese. Assessments, if you will, are diocesan tax. But it's, what it covers is, a lot of the services that we receive from the Diocese, you know, we have centralized bookkeeping that's in the cloud, we have our parish database, we have insurances, we have, you know, just a lot of different things that we pay for out of those taxes, but we receive services from the Diocese for those. But it's an economy of scale to do all at the Diocese, rather than having everybody duplicating all the efforts. But we didn't pay those in a couple, a couple of years, and that amounts to about 45,000, I'm sorry, 59,000, almost $60,000 that are back, that are back. So, that's kind of what I see, and Finance Council, that we see as the pressing issues facing our parish. If you want to know what we're talking about in terms of demolition area, we're sitting right here in the church, okay? Let me use the, I think there's a pointer on here. Is that it? You can't see it. There's a, we're sitting here in church, this is the rectory, this is the Donley Center, the current school and gymnasium, this is the parish offices, and then this is the area that we're talking about, original church, gym, and then this area back here. That's where we're talking, and there's a fence around all of that right now. Okay. Okay, how do we pay for that, okay? That's obviously the big question. After COVID, and now that was over, the IRS came out with what's called the Employee Retention Tax Credit, ERTC. And it was to help organizations, entities, pay them back for expenses they had, and also not laying off all their employees during that time, and still had to make payroll. So it's kind of a reimbursement for funds that we spent during COVID, to maintain people's employment. The Diocese helped us, and we applied for this tax credit, pardon me, and we, we had our application audited by a third party to make sure it was solid, and that if we submitted it, we wouldn't get it bounced because of mistakes. I mean, this is new, right? This is like, nobody's ever done this before. So we did have an audit to make sure the application. Well, that started, and they started rewarding these things, and bam, they shut it down. Because, was that a year or two ago they shut it down? No, it was about a year ago, they shut it down because, within like, very short period of time, they recognized there's all kinds of fraud in the applications, tons. And they didn't have enough or proper screening to screen these applications, they shut it down. And then it's like, what's happening? Nobody hears. We're waiting. And we applied for $420,000, substantial. Well, we got word, and that that has started back up. Started back up in September, and in fact, we received, Barb Stager did some research for us, thank you Barb, and sent me some of the memos that it was coming. Since that time, the Diocese has contacted us and given us very specific directions on how that money's coming, and that it's coming. In fact, some of the parishes already in the Diocese have gotten it. So we're waiting, and we're very, very, you know, we're pretty sure that that's just coming, it's just to wait and see, and it'll come in like four different, four different payments. Also, I'm sorry, you guys, if you remember, we had the Living Christ campaign, it was the Diocese and Capitol campaign, and in that campaign, and I'll talk more about that in just a second, the money for that, 35% of everything any parish, ourselves included, raised, would come back to the parish. And then if we went over our goal, thanks, 50% of our, would come back to the parish, okay? That amounted, when it was all over, we were, we were expecting $260,000 back from the Operational savings, approximately, to cover all those costs I outlined before, would be kicking in another $40,773, making the same total as the cost of the previous slide, $720,000. Now, the bishop gave us a verbal kind of commitment to us, in the meeting, that they would front the money to us until we got our ERTC money, our Living Christ pledges would come in, because that's spread over five years. And so that, they would front us the money, so we could get started on this, and without having to wait until we got it all, because these are pressing, pressing issues. Now getting back to the Living Christ campaign, this was the original kind of brochure that went out, asking you to contribute to it, but on the second page of that, was what the money would be used for. Air conditioning the church, doing some improvement to our Adoration Chapel, and then artistic rejuvenation and exterior improvements to our church, kind of sprucing up the church, okay, making it look nicer, more cosmetic than anything else. But if indeed, we decide to use our Living Christ campaign, the case, this is called the case statement, the case statement has to be changed. And I can't just arbitrarily change that. I, I mean, that's not fair to the people that have given to the campaign, so there's a very specific process, if we are going to change that case statement, that I have to do. One is I have to have approval from the Finance Committee, one, I have to have approval from the Pastoral Council, and third, I have to have a town hall meeting to talk about it, so people know, and then lastly, I've got to go to the pulpit with it, at every single mass, so everybody knows, and it's not a surprise, et cetera. So, what I'm proposing is that we change the case statement to this. Installation of boilers to heat the church, tuck pointing the church, and then a contribution towards the demolition and asbestos removal. What that third one is, is that it cuts down on the amount, if, if we need it, we would use whatever would be left from these two, towards not taking money out of our operational savings, to cover that gap, if you will, because there was, there was a little gap that we'd have to, to fill in with operational savings. Want to give you a, just kind of a, this is a very simple financial report of the parish. Right now, our budget for this year, we project income, $2,716,154. When we do those, when we do those projected budgets, we look obviously at history, we look at any special circumstances that we see, we look at school enrollment, on how much tuition we're going to collect, okay? That all kind of goes into the pot, of figuring out what that projected income's going to be. And then we project expenses, cut it in the same way. And right now, we're looking at, if you want to call it a net loss, at $21,758. Now, let me please explain, that's 0.8% of the budget. And the reason I point that out, is I've always had a rule of thumb as a pastor, that if you get your budget, if it's within 5% either way, it's balanced. Because there is no way I can manage 0.8%. Example, Friday, I come home, walk into the rectory, and smell sewer gas, or sewer. So Mr. Rooter's out here, and we have roots growing into the sewer line, okay? And that's something I would have never been able to, you know, that's $1,000 that I would have never been able to have seen. Likewise, our enrollment in the school is higher than when the budget was put together. So now we have more revenue projected to come in from the school, okay? Now, we didn't see that when we put the numbers together originally. Now that also has a ripple effect, because not only is it tuition, it's mandated services, which is some other money that we get per student, I didn't say kid, student, it's also Ed Choice money that we get, et cetera, et cetera, it's just had, it's more complicated than this, I'm just giving you some round numbers. I'm only saying all of that, because even though that's a negative number, it's only 0.8%, okay? So, if we get to that point, I, I, it's a balanced budget, I think. And we, we kind of watch the ones, the pieces that we see are the most critical, the heaviest. What do we have cash on hand? Right now, in our checking account, we have $191,000. In savings, we have $199,000. Living Christ, so far, we have collected $128,000 of pledges, that were pledged out of that whole 100 and 260, okay? Now, one of the things I want to say caution, and one of the reasons that I said that we would apply anything left over of Living Christ to this, to avoid taking money out of this, or the least amount we have to, is because we need to maintain a substantial savings and checking account, because cash flow is not even. Like, we can't say all of our expenses are going to divide it by 12, and that's what it's going to be every month. It doesn't happen like that. An example of that, probably the easiest example to tell you about, is teacher salaries. It's a 12-month contract, so when they finish teaching mid-May, we still pay them in June, July, and part of August. So if we don't have cash in our checking and savings account, built up, to carry us through the summer, we can be in trouble, right? Because you can't make, the other complication to this is, is the government money, mandated service, and Ed Choice money that comes in for the school, doesn't come in the first day of school. It comes in a month or two after that. Yeah, last year was what, three and four? Yeah. But, yeah, Deacon Bob is also the business manager at St. Pius, so he knows this, that's why he chimed in. The good news is, this year, this year we saw a great improvement of the timing. So that's been awesome for us, is to see, in fact, so that money, they must have kind of improved there, because last year was kind of, first year was kind of a mess, came in, but it was delayed. So I'm saying cash flow is a big thing, so we can't just have, we've got to make sure we have it, reserves, to cover those dips and flows. Okay, what's the expected timeline of this? We're in the church boiler and design and installation and demolition, what we think is, all of that could be done by the end of the fiscal year. Fiscal year being June 30th. The new fiscal year begins July 1st, not calendar year, fiscal year, okay? Right, that is kind of my very direct, now what I'd like to do is, do you have any questions about this? Yeah?
The Diocese is going to front the commission, what are, what are they going to prepare?
Right now, they're going to just front it, so we can get it done. That's our understanding, they didn't, yes?
Is it boiling, the new school, or is that?
Yes. And actually, it's not boiler, the new school and gym are furnaces, and there are multiples over there. Back, way back.
Okay, I, I want to, I can't remember the word.
Come on up.
I, I wonder if it's pretty, I don't think we need any more decorations inside the church. And everybody's going to be, first off, should have, because this, I know it was a line that was a champion, and the rest of the chapel, and bring up some other statues. But I would say this is the wall, everyone's, the church, the roof is stained, looks like a old roof. This is the church, um, eating, but I understand that you can't point, um, in the room, the way you're going to hurt the locks, is that a permanent feature, or is that temporary? And the roof, or whatever, you check and make sure it's okay.
And we could, I mean, we will do that, I mean, that's part of ongoing maintenance.
Maybe if you have a bigger, um, well, my, my presentation today basically is to show you, that yes, indeed, for the three things that I've identified and presented to you, we have a way to fund it. The air conditioning issue you pointed out, one of the things that Bishop, when Living Christ campaign came out, the Diocese and Capitol campaign, there was a moratorium put, no fundraising, no capital campaigns for parishes, unless they were combined with Living Christ. If they weren't, nothing during the term of Living Christ. However, the bishop gave us permission, if we get through this, which is, you've got to eat the elephant one bite at a time, okay? So we get this thing accomplished, he did say, if, if the parish decides that air conditioning is something they want, he did say, you can begin to fundraise, even though Living Christ might be open. I, I'm saying, I'm not saying we're going to do it right away, but what I am saying is, I think we, if, if that's something I'm hearing and feeling that people really want, we don't just single that out, we look at all our needs, so I'm not coming back, and back, and back, that we seriously look at that fundraiser and say, let's make sure we're not missing something else that we need, and let's do it one time. Because I don't know about you, but, you know, that, when I get, I don't want it, but every year, somebody's coming at me, so I would respect that. Does that sort of answer your question? Yeah, I think that's, uh, air conditioning, you mean, you're ready to split out?
Well, but that apparent, come here.
But then, you have a classroom, and I heard something about it a little bit, and then...
Yeah, I'll give, I'll give you detail on that.
Yeah, just in the middle of school, the outside, the church, it's amazing.
Jeremy, can I address, I'll try, and if I, if I don't get it, you help me. Because Jerry's more, Jeremy's more hands-on with the, the new classrooms that are coming in. What happened with that, was the company that we're, we're getting those from, did not do their homework, quite frankly, and although they had one state stamp of approval on the drawings, to go ahead with it, there was a second by the Ohio Building Commission, that they didn't have. We weren't allowed to install them, and they've had to resubmit their drawings to the State of Ohio Building Commission. And it has been incredibly frustrating in time. The bureaucracy, okay? So it's our understanding right now, is they made, said, you have to make these changes. They made them changes, they sent it back, and they said, nope, there's one more change, and it went back. Now, it's back with the state, building commission. We're waiting on that last approval, and then the units will be assembled. But once those drawings are finalized, you're going to see some work begin over there before, to get the pylons in and all of the stuff, so that when they come in, they'll sit. But we're not starting that until we're absolutely sure we have the right dimensions. Because we don't want to build them, and then all of a sudden, oh, it's three feet that way, or three inches that way. So, does that give them a good summary? Okay. It's been with the state since August. I can just tell you off the top, because I know it very well. Yeah, thank you. He's asking, how much do we pay a month in interest to the diocese? On the loan that we have writing? And that's a separate issue that I presented today. But that is about fourteen thousand dollars, right now. But that issue will be addressed after we get these pressing things done, okay? Yep, Mike? Okay, he's got two questions. One, can anything be salvaged out of the school, church? No, except we do plan the front of the old church, the arch. Those are real children's faces at the time that that church was built. There are, there are grandkids, that that's our grandma up there. So the intent is, because that's an exterior piece that we can remove at demolition without going inside to try to get something out and putting somebody at peril with something falling down on them, that is something that, that's what we're going to try to keep. How that will be used, there's been some ideas floated, a grotto or something. You're right. The second question was, is there any plans for all that space once it's down? The answer's no, other than pops, possibly a grotto. But the demolition will include topsoil to make it green space. And then we can address down the road what we want to do. Questions?
Does the demolition include parish hall?
No, that'll stay standing. Yeah, that, that structure's sound. It requires some maintenance, but it's sound. Right there. Do you remember the old teachers, the teachers' parking lot? Or that, right there? Is there any need to expand parking, easier access to church? I would say, I mean, from distance-wise, I mean, particularly with people on mobility issues, yeah, probably. Because if you're parking on the street in a circle, that's a hike, right? But right now, I think we have to get through some bigger issues till we get to that. Okay, um, so I guess I presented you, probably one of the biggest things here is this kind of an overall plan, including this changing the case statement to the Living Christ. This kind of a question I'm going to kind of put out there is, do I kind of feel that we have kind of some general consensus, this is what we ought to do? Do I, do I hear any, like, strong, I mean, like? You should go with it? Wait, 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 I don't give a... Well, if somebody has given to Living Christ and wants her money back, I, I think morally, I have to give it back. I mean, I can't. And I think we also have a donation outside of Living Christ that was given to the parish specifically for air conditioning. I can't use that money towards this. I mean, I, that's morally not right. It was a restricted gift. So we can't use money that's a restricted gift. People that have given money to Living Christ with that three-fold case statement, you know, I, I guess if they choose to say, I'm not sure I can give the money back, but they choose to say, hey, no more, I have to honor that, because of case statement charter. And if they want their money back, come talk to me. You know, I'm not going to be a jerk. And I, I, but I also am looking out for the, for the betterment of this, my parish, our parish now. And I'm trying to figure out a way to, to make it happen and pay for it. Yeah? The question was, I don't want to see the parish go in any deeper debt, and that's why I would support changing the case statement. Okay. Way back, yep? Does this plan involve going to church? Oh, I'm, thank you, John. That, that's addressing... Yes, thank you, John. John is basically stating this does not involve any more debt to the diocese. There's some timing issues of cash flow that the diocese is going to help us out with to make this thing happen. Do I hear a question? I'm sorry? I can't, I didn't know where it's coming from. Okay. Thank you, okay. What, what, if, if nobody heard that, she said that she has breathing issues. We don't have air conditioning, if it's ninety or above, she can't come to church here. But she said, what good is it to have air conditioning if, if the church falls down? So, okay. Yeah, thanks. The, he wants to know, where's the physical location of the boil, the new boiler? Basement of this building? Back here, if you go down, we have a brides room down there, but we also have a storage room where we store a lot of our decorations and Christmas and all that stuff. Last week, I got with the people that use that space, and we went through all, all, every room in this whole church to say, okay, when's the last time that was used? And is it of any value? No, no, no. Boom. I mean, there are some nasty chairs behind, back there that are just gross, and they've been sitting there for, I don't know how long. So they're gone to the treasure sale. And, but that's the kind of, the, the, long and short is, we have room to relocate all that stuff in that space up here. There'll be some minor construction pieces. There'll be a soffit that's put in my vesting sacristy above one of the shelves so that pipes can go through it. There'll be another divider wall put down in the basement. Minor stuff, in terms of construction. Yeah, it'll be hot water, and it'll be gas. But high efficiency. So we should see our heating bills go down here. I mean, the technology of those boilers was, I mean, those boilers over there are the size of the altar. The new boilers are like that big and that big. I mean, they're just night and day on size. Like... I don't know. I, I don't know. Okay. Well, folks, thanks for your patience. I can tell you, we'll keep chipping away. I'll try to, I'll keep you informed as things go along as best I can. I am about transparency, and I'll, anytime, my door's open too. So if you get home and go, think of a question or whatever, please, don't hesitate. If I don't know the answer, and I don't know it all, I'll try to find out.
So at this point, are we looking for that old structure, or now, I mean?
And probably the gating item of that is going to be the heating installation here, so that we can make sure we have heat when we need it. Okay? All right. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. To us the beginning, the sound, and the shall be, will, and the end. Amen. God bless, have a good Thanksgiving, everybody. Yeah? Here's the deal. We'll transition, the main... We'll transition, the main...